Just the planning board.
Yeah.
I think.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 21st meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I'm Scott Alupka, Chair of the Board. We will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. O'Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German? Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Hitten?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Ms. Munesses? I'll get that name right one of these days. Ms. Panero? Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
And Mr. Heinel has just joined us.
Present, thank you.
Uh, will you now please join me in reciting the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder to all board members, be sure you are unmuting your microphone before you begin speaking and be sure to turn your microphone on when you are speaking. Before we start with today's agenda, I want to remind everyone that the board votes on the updated landscape manual and the updated open space manual have been postponed tentatively until January 16th so that the county can get additional input from community members. But I want to thank the county staff for taking the comments and issues that were presented at the last meeting seriously and making adjustments accordingly. Ms. Pachek, are there any changes to the agenda? In the November 15th email you received, draft minutes from the November 7th meeting, as everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any additions or changes? If no, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated. Motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes as sent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are carried. Hopefully, this will be a relatively quick first part of the meeting. We'll now get reports from the November 14th meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Committee.
At the November 14th, 2024, LPC meeting, the LPC voted to issue one certificate appropriateness for the following properties: The Glendon United Methodist Church located at 4713 Butler Road in Glendon. And that concludes that report.
Thank you. Now, recent county council legislation of interest to the board.
First one is Bill 8024, zoning regulations, office buildings in the residential office RO zone, for the purpose of repealing certain special exception uses for Class B office buildings that contain certain uses in the RO zone, repealing certain gross floor area and parking restrictions for a Class B office building in the RO zone relating to medical offices, establishing alternative minimum yard setbacks for certain uses in the RO zone if the use adjoins certain other zones, setting certain standards for bulk regulation and landscaping modifications by the Office of Administrative Hearings under certain circumstances, repealing certain obsolete references and generally relating to uses in the RO zone and office buildings. Next one is Bill 8124, zoning regulations, converted builder show house, for the purpose of defining a converted builder show house permitting the use in the DR 35 and DR 16 zones under certain conditions, and setting special regulations for the use setting the minimum number of all-street parking spaces for a converted builder show house permitting certain signage for a converted builder show house and generally relating to converted builder show houses. And that concludes that report.
Thank you.
Mr. Luca, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to the board that we start our capital budget presentations and meetings in January, although we're not scheduled to start till January 16th, there will be no meeting on January 2nd. At that 16th meeting, the County Executive or the Acting County Executive will be presenting the capital budget. I believe we start with DPWNT that night, and we also will have the vote on the landscape and open space manuals as part of the agenda for the board.
Thank you. Be ready for another set of meetings come January, February. Before we adjourn this part of the board meeting, this is the last planning board meeting for several of our longstanding members, and I have the privilege to recognize them and present them with citations from the County Executive to thank them for their dedication to the board for all these years. I'm going to hand these out, and then if any of you want to say any words, happy to hear from you. Kathy, for you?
Thank you. Do you say the words now?
Sure. Do you want to say the word?
I just want to say, incredible education this has been. You know, I've said many times, I've earned an associate's degree from Catonsville Community College, but I earned a master's degree in planning here. And I leave you with this: Protect the urinal and build up, not out. And it's been wonderful working with all of you. Thank you.
Representing the northern part of Baltimore County, where mostly agriculture is, farms in Baltimore County contribute a major part of the foods consumed in Baltimore County, whether it be going out and pick your own, whether it be poultry or hamburger or wherever it is. We have Angus cattle and beef and corn on our, I mean, corn and soybeans on our farm, and it goes to Lancaster County to be converted to feed, and then it goes to feed chickens and cattle, poultry, and a variety of things, and comes back to Baltimore County through your local grocery store. So we can't ever overlook the importance of maintaining the agriculture areas of the county. There's over 100,000 acres now that's converted to agriculture. And every time you go to the store and just think that if some major crisis where traffic couldn't bring in food from other areas, how lucky you are to have a place close by where you can always eat. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds hot. I spoke last time, so I'll say my words. And then finally, Howard, could you come up and receive yours? And would you like to say a few words? Okay. Thank you. Again, I just want to thank, I mean, the board is losing a great deal of experience and wisdom, and we hope your replacements can do at least half the job that all of you have done. So thank you very much for your service.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, actually, on behalf of the County Executive and the planning staff, I want to thank all four of these stellar planning board members. I think you've said it well, that we're losing years of understanding and knowledge, that I know the remaining members will be able to step in behind, but each of them in their own right has shown enormous, extraordinary service to the county, to their own commitments to the communities they represent, and to advocacy on the issues that are so important to them. I think we all have learned from each of them, and we've all benefited, frankly, from having the diverse perspectives that each of them brought. It's one of the, I think, trademarks of the planning boards, to have a diverse and thoughtful group of people not only bringing individual perspectives, but are really representing interests that they care about. Each has, I think, demonstrated a real commitment to the residents of the county as well as to the future. And I think this is a future-looking group that really is important. So I just want to thank Kathy and Wayne and Todd and Howard, and appreciate Howard coming back this evening as well to be part of this, basically, the last meeting. They'll be serving at least in this capacity. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I want to thank Nancy Hafford for coming back and honoring the board members that she has served so long with as well. So appreciate you being here, Nancy.
Say one more thing.
Sure.
After the war of 1812, it became very crowded in Baltimore County, and most of the families, a large number of families moved out to Ohio, moved west where land was cheaper, and they had more room. Things haven't changed in the last 200 years, and now, when I go up the 83 in the evening or in the morning, I see all the cars back-to-back going into Pennsylvania. So when it gets too crowded down here, don't feel too sorry for them, because a lot of people are making the same choice that had been made over the last 200 years, and going over the eastern shore, it's only a 30-minute drive to the eastern shore or to Pennsylvania or some of these other areas. So I know, I feel sorry for Chairman every now and then when he gets a little crowded down inside the Beltway.
Indeed, it does sometimes.
I didn't know you were around back then. I had an ear session when we were here. Someone went to Ohio.
And they were on the planning board. This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for a public hearings on the Reisterstown Main Street Streetscape Action Plan and the Reisterstown Main Street Design Guidelines at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. We also have a treat. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Welcome again to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearings on the Reisterstown Main Street Action Plan and the Reisterstown Main Street Design Guidelines. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Scott Alupka, Chair of the Planning Board. We will start with a roll call to account for members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. O'Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hitten?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Ms. Munesses? Ms. Panero is absent. Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you. The first public hearing we have on the agenda tonight is on the Reisterstown Main Street Streetscape Action Plan. This item was first introduced to the board on November 7th, 2024, with a presentation by Ms. Sidney Cooper of the Department of Planning. Tonight, Ms. Cooper, along with Crystal McCreaty and Vicky Allman of the Reisterstown Improvement Association, are here to further present the action plan to the board. Following the presentation, board members will have a chance to ask questions, and then members of the public will have the opportunity to speak on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Cooper.
Good evening, Chair and members of the planning board. Again, I am Sidney Cooper, community planner for District 2, and it is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Crystal McCreaty, Main Street Manager, and Vicky Allman, Design Chair, who will be giving you your in-depth presentations this evening. You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. See a few familiar faces. Nice to be back, I think. So I am Vicky Allman. This is Crystal McCreaty, and we do have the slide presentation for the Main Street Streetscape Action Plan. So if we could have the first slide, please. Let's, this is the agenda for tonight, the background, timeline and process, consultant selection, community engagement, main components. We'll go on to the next one. So in the background, this gives you relevant background information. Work on these projects date back to the 1970s. Resolution 4424 was passed by the County Council on October 7th, 2024, requesting the planning board to review the documents. The MDDHCD awarded RIA Operation Assistant Grant to create Streetscape Action Plan and the Design Guidelines, the Streetscape Action Plan to be adopted as an amendment to Master Plan 2030. So the timeline and process. NDC, which involved all areas of our community and visionary workshops, resulting in a final draft, reviewed by several county agencies, as you can see by the slide, requested edits were made, and the resolution passed 44-24, October 7th, 2024. If you have any questions as we're going along, please ask. Next slide, please. Consultant selection. The consultants were selected, NDC and Access. Their credentials are listed, and their work ensued in January of 2023. Next slide. The comprehensive community engagement phase completed in May of '23. All components engaged in the activities listed. All were asked to share thoughts and suggestions on various subjects that relate to the Streetscape design, and there were several good town hall meetings with several questions, suggestions. Separate workshops were held for nonprofits, business owners, property owners, youth from the local high schools, town halls, and surveys were listed in the Monday mailer that we have for several weeks. Next one, please. Existing Streetscape analysis consisting of road issues, commercial and small business, high speed, parking, pedestrian safety, below-average tree canopy, building materials, building use, zoning, and sub-districts, architectural language, zoning. That's the slide with the architectural language, the existing building use, the zoning, the mixture of zoning districts, and the sub-districts. The sub-districts consist of three: North, beginning of Main Street to Chatsworth; Central, intersection on Chatsworth and Main Street to Bond Avenue, designed or defined by its historic built environment; and the South District, which begins at Glendon Drive and encompasses Glendon to Woodley Avenues. The goals and actions for Streetscape are from pedestrian safety to enhancement of arts and cultural activities, connectivity, and development. Comprehensive goals and actions in more detail with those responsible sub-districts, timelines, and descriptions are all here in the slide. The goals and actions here are in much more detail, listing each goal, supporting action items, each sub-district lead agency phasing, community role, and funding source. Lots of good reading for you there. And then the retail market analysis showing neighboring Main Streets and Reisterstown itself and their analysis. And then the retail market analysis preliminary node recommendations. And that's that for Streetscape. Crystal, did you have anything to add? No? Okay. Um, we do have this evening Tom Pelon, who is from St. John Properties, and he, we just heard that he has a couple of concerns that he would like to talk about tonight, so we hope you will give him a chance to do that, and we'd like to hear them as well. Okay?
Are there any questions for Ms. Allman and Ms. I'm going to, McCreaty?
I mean, I love Reisterstown.
So do I. Right.
Is that part of the plan?
I think we do talk about it in design guidelines, or design guidelines, but it is, parking would be in the back of the buildings, because if you're in Reisterstown, you're just driving through, you don't see much. But when you're in Reisterstown, you see the front of the buildings, which are historic mostly on that part of Main Street. But the back, you know, people have built along the back, at the Reisterstown Methodist Church, they allow us to use their parking lots for several of our activities. But we have been trying to identify different areas on Main Street, behind buildings, for instance, near Chatsworth School, where we'd be, we would be able to have public parking free. St. John's. St. John's has a large business center there, right in. Yeah, that's really south, and it's a little far for people to walk. So what we're looking for is more walkability and actually safety for our pedestrians to be able to cross the street, go from shop to shop, restaurant to restaurant, we hope, one day, that kind of thing. And we do have the Horse Breeders Association, that is a new addition to Reisterstown, which they're bringing a lot of people in to their library and to their museums. So they've been a, and they have a very nice parking lot, not huge, but they allow us to use that parking lot as well. You're welcome. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Is there, is there traffic calming involved in the plan as far as, I mean, as far as protecting pedestrians?
It is the state highway that goes through the town.
I understand that.
And we're not the only ones who have this highway going through the town.
We do touch on it in our design guidelines as possible options, but we have met with SHA, and we are constantly trying to come up with new ideas and how to get people to slow down.
They have very good ideas.
Yes.
Yes.
So we are working with state highway. We don't really want blinking lights and, you know, huge things like that, but we're working with pedestrian crossways, with smaller signs, and actually. Right.
Right, to squeeze them.
That would be hard to do. That would be hard to do. We're also working with the police department, and when we have some of our bigger events, music on Main Street and that sort of thing, they're always there to help with traffic and to help people cross, but of course, they can't be there every day.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Other questions? Thank you. We will now call upon those of you who have completed the sign-in sheet located in the Jefferson Building lobby to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order that you have registered. Speakers, please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. Please provide your name and the organization you represent, if applicable. Crystal, who do we begin with?
First, we have. First, we have Tom Pelon.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Thomas Pelon. I'm Executive Vice President for St. John Properties. We own the Reisterstown Business Center, which is on Main Street at Business Center Drive in Reisterstown, which is part of what they designate as the central district in the plan. Just thank you, first of all, for the opportunity to be here this evening. And I apologize, we really did just find out about this plan very recently. We are members of RIA, and we often are approached to do various things, use our parking lots. We, I was looking on Google Street View the other day, and I noticed there was, when they took the picture in 2023, you could see the Farmer's Market, and I think it was the Blooming Arts Fest or something like that. We're actually tacked to our leasing sign underneath and things like that, so we've certainly been involved. And we get requests all the time, so a little unclear to me as to why I wasn't aware of this, but in that, regardless of that, I've reviewed the plan, and we do have several things that we'd like to respectfully ask either be removed from the plan or at least modified from the plan. And I just, I'll list the individual goals, and I've got like one sentence on each. So Goal 2.6 references shared parking. And the idea, that goal of trying to get shared parking for us creates management liability issues, so we would have that concern, that certainly that would only be voluntary. Goal 3.1 references business certifications requiring collection of lease terms, which we would consider sensitive data that we and our clients would not be willing to share. Goal 3.3, it references establishing core hours through standardized lease language, which, again, we can't have third parties involved in our lease negotiations. Goal 3.9 talks about a rezoning strategy that recommends removing BR from the central district. Our property, the front part of it is in the district and the back part is not, but the zoning line, based on where the line was struck, it looks like at least a portion of our property would be split-zoned, and potentially someone might take that as a, as a trigger to say, well, let's downzone the whole property, and that for us would be problematic. 4.11.
Your two minutes are up, so if you can finish up, please?
I have three more points. I'll hit them.
Okay. Do them quickly, please.
And I apologize. 4.11, activate existing parking lots with placemaking elements like string lighting and such. We would just simply ask that those designations be removed from our property. Again, we've voluntarily done those things, but wouldn't want that, anyone to perceive that as a requirement. There's also a comment, 5.3, about negotiating installation of a town commons on our property. We're not interested. We acquired that property for development purposes, so we're not interested in the county acquiring that. And then 6.1, there's a discussion about eliminating the center turn lane from Chatsworth Avenue to Bond Avenue. We have large trucks coming and going from our property, so that could create challenges for our tenants getting in and out. And those are the comments I have, and thank you for tolerating my run over there.
Next, we just have Patsy Malone.
No, use the microphone, please.
We're online.
Got it. I'm Land Use Counsel for St. John Properties and accompanying Mr. Pelon here tonight. As he said, we just became aware of this plan, actually, when the resolution was introduced by the council, which is basically, they passed it less than a month ago, and we're already here for a vote. So I would ask the board to consider perhaps giving some time for Mr. Pelon to talk to the community members to see if they can come to terms with some of these items. Otherwise, perhaps postpone the vote for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. There will be an adjournment after the public hearing, so we can take a little time in between that and, and calling the board back to session, so perhaps you can use that time to, to talk to the, the community. The second public hearing we have tonight is on the Reisterstown Main Street Design Guidelines. This item was also first introduced to the board on November 7th, 2024, with a presentation by Ms. Sidney Cooper of the Department of Planning. Tonight, Ms. Cooper, along with Crystal McCreaty and Vicky Allman of the Reisterstown Improvement Association, are here to further present the design guidelines to the board. Following the presentation, board members will have a chance to ask questions, and then members of the public will have the opportunity to speak on that matter. Welcome back, Ms. Cooper.
I don't believe we've met before. Again, I'm going to introduce Crystal and Vicky to do this presentation for you as well.
In my haste to get started before, I wanted to, I neglected to say, and I wanted to say how much we appreciate the work of the Baltimore County Council, all of the departments in Baltimore County, and our community partners, and all of the folks who have been working on this for a long and all of the folks who have been working on this for a long time. Amy Mantegue actually was our very first Main Street manager many, many years ago. I think you got the whole thing going, so we appreciate that very much. Okay, so Main Street Design Guidelines, here we go. We'll take the background, please. Okay, so much like the background for Streetscape, Council Resolution 4424, passed on October 7th, 2024, request reviewed by the planning board. The process itself was started back in the 1970s. It's an RIA, Reisterstown Improvement Association-led initiative. Grants have been awarded, desired guidelines to be incorporated into the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies. The timeline and process, January to May of '23, community engagement led by N D C, focus groups, which led to a final draft, review by planning, requested edits were sent back and made, October 2024, resolution passed. The consultant selection and credentials, N D C and access, were selected. They were both recommended by Main Street America and Maryland D H C D. Community engagement completed January through May of '23. Several methods were used to include everyone in this process. Visioning workshops, passive boards where participants asked to think about what words or images come to mind. That was very interesting, by the way. Some of the words and things that came to mind. So there was the community visioning workshop. People were asked to share their thoughts on various subjects that relate to design.
We did a workshop with the youth at the high school, with the future business leaders and other interested parties. We did surveys for months through the Monday Mailer, and then we had a separate workshop held in the Maryland Horse for Nonprofits to come to that one, so.
The goals for the guidelines, to encourage high-quality designs consistent with historic character. The town was established in 1758 on the National Register of Historic Places. And we want to provide design for new and existing buildings. The main components, district style, parking structures, materials used for building, lighting, signage, street presence. All new construction and renovation should align with the established character of Reisterstown. The list is included on this slide. For instance, landscaping in the front yards, including trees and decorative plantings, parking lots and garages located behind buildings and appropriately screened whenever possible, roof lines, front porches, that sort of thing. Massive in street presence, any new structures and infill should contribute to the charming, walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment. And parking lots and garage service areas, the preferences are here. Parking should be placed in the rear of buildings, as we've said several times. Parking lots are located adjacent to Main Street, should provide at least 10 feet of landscaping between the lot and the roadway. Landscaped areas and screenings should complement the overall design and character. Lot screening, screening of parking, service areas and trash. And garages should be in the rear or the side of the residence wherever possible. And building material and design, new and redevelopment should use durable materials that align with district characters. You can see roof lines, facade articulation, trim, and architectural detail. Lighting, very important aspect of design and compatibility. Poles and fixtures should be of a style compatible with the design and architectural style of the buildings. Improper lighting, certainly flashing, moving, revolving, rotating, blinking lights. We really don't want to have anything like that on Main Street. And the same really with signage, it's a very important aspect of the design. The size and the shape of the signs, the construction, specific, specific types of signs to use. Nothing with, again, flashing lights and arrows and anything like that that would take away from the look of Main Street.
Again, we would discourage these poor options with the business owners by offering new incentives through available grant funding that we have, so.
And the grant funding is key for some of our residents and our business owners, because they're able to make improvements to their buildings with our help. So guidelines in action. These are a couple of interesting sites that we have. Reister's Daughter, which is at the corner of Cockeys Mill and Main Street. It's a small little coffee shop and lunch area, which is quite busy. They have an interesting parking lot in the back, and also a very small picnic park, where you can get your sandwich and your coffee and go back there and sit in some quiet and green. A vacant building there formerly Thrifty's, that's next to the Harriman House. That is now Enterprise, right? Rental cars. Right, and they, they, they are also doing some landscaping and that sort of thing there with that. And the other two...
How it would look with signage or awnings?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, questions for the board?
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough. I'm, I'm a little confused, so I have a couple of questions. The first is that on both of the presentations that you made this evening, one of the, one of the highlights on one of the slides in each presentation was that you, you did a comprehensive job of engaging a lot of different constituencies in the area. And yet, we hear today that one major constituency was not included. I'm, I'm just interested in how that, how that came to pass?
Well, we're, we're a little blindsided by the fact that St. John Properties did not know what was going on this evening. We have had communications go out regularly. We've been doing it for a couple of years, emails, newsletters, and I think...
Directly to them or just in general?
General to a lot of people. I mean, they are on our mailing list. And somehow, right, we're, we're concerned that perhaps the notifications might have gotten to the wrong person. That I don't think they got to Mr., to Mr. Pelon. And we're sure it didn't, or he wouldn't be here today.
Okay.
But we're afraid that perhaps it got lost in the...
And my second question is, it, would, would there, would there be, is time of the essence, and if it is, why? And could this just be deferred until you have a chance to sit down and... Because it sounds like you, you've developed a very collegial, working environment in your area. And it seems like a major constituency just found out about it, however that happened. Is there, is there a rush that this needs to happen tonight? Or is there, are there grants to be applied for, or anything like that? Like, is there a rush?
Right.
We've been told for the last five years that we need to have our design guidelines in place.
Okay, so there's nothing, there's no, there's no real firm deadlines on any kind of funding opportunity or anything like that?
And we would like the opportunity to talk to Mr. Pelon, because there are things that, I mean, we certainly have worked with St. John Properties.
Right, right. Yeah, you made that, you, you said that, so.
And we're not...
Okay. Okay.
So we're, we're not opposed to, to talking to him and to reviewing his issues and taking out what we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I was, thank you for your presentation. So kind of following up on Chris's questions. Is there, is there like a grace period where these guidelines and action plans go into place? So for existing property owners, like you gave us a couple of great examples of retrofitting different things, but is there, I mean, I know there's some grants and different things in place. It's not always the fastest thing to go through the grant process. So is there a grace period on when the existing businesses would have to start conforming to these new guidelines? They don't. So this is just forward. Okay.
Right. We can refer to the guidelines that say, I'm sorry, but no flashing lights, no arrows, that sort of thing. And we thought perhaps maybe you were just tired of seeing us, and we could, we could get this done now.
So the existing businesses don't get affected by these new guidelines? It's just, it's just more the future businesses? Okay.
If we have something that we can work with, design-wise, to start off with signage, it's a jumping off point.
Okay, thank you.
And it makes it, it makes our job easier to say no to somebody who wants to do something against the guidelines. We can refer to them and just say, sorry, we don't allow that.
We cannot pay for a giant flashing sign.
Right.
Todd?
Yeah, I've, and Vicky, you've been a champion of businesses forever, so. I know you're not doing anything to hurt a business, but because I've worked in that market for a very long time and was involved in a bank there. This is the incubator for our community. So I would agree that giving a little bit of time for them to communicate with you, most of, some amazing businesses have come out of there. The Green Monster wouldn't have seats above it if it wasn't a business that was in that community. So banking a number of the people that have been in that industrial park, I just think it's, it's appropriate to, to give a little more time. I, I'm fully in support of what you're trying to do. I think it's the right thing to do. But a little more time, I think is...
We do not want St. John Properties not to be with us, because they have been for all these years. So this, I think, I believe, was a miscommunication and misunderstanding that we feel we can work out.
And I know you wouldn't do that, so I know your heart. So I just, I would want to recommend that we give them you some time.
I understand.
But I'm fully in support of what you're trying to do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chris?
So there's two, two items. One is the Streetscape Action Plan, and one is the Main Street Design Guidelines. I, I can't recall, the, the gentleman from St. John's, what, was there just, just one of these that you took, had issue with, or, or both?
Streetscape, correct?
It's a potential, yeah, potentially.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
We will now call upon anyone who has completed the sign-in sheet in the Jefferson Lobby to speak on this topic. We have any...
There are no speakers for this one.
Okay. So at this time, unless there are any further comments or questions from the board, we will, this will conclude our second and final public hearing of the evening. Following the adjournment of the public hearing, we will reconvene for a vote on those matters. It's 5:30, so it's a 10-minute recess, perhaps, to give you guys a chance to talk, and then we can reconvene about 5:40.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Thank you all for your attention. Very nice to be here again.
During your discussions, could you all come up with how quick you think you could do this? Like, should, would it be two weeks? Would it be two, two months? How long, how long do you need to, because you can't, you're not going to solve it tonight. How long do you really need to solve it?
Definitely let you know that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe you have to officially adjourn the public hearing, and then we can reconvene in 10 minutes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Thank you.
Sorry. The public meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now reconvened and called to order. I'm Scott Alupka, Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We will start with a roll call to account for members of the board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hafer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses? Ms. Penaro? Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
This evening, we've had the opportunity to discuss and then vote on the Reisterstown Main Street Streetscape Action Plan. Staff from the Department of Planning are here to answer any further questions the board may have as we discuss and before we vote. Board members, are there any outstanding questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe the, the two parties who have been in conversation, Ms. Allman, I believe they've agreed to a postponement of the vote from tonight. I don't want to speak for you. You want to step up?
Yes, in order to make sure that everything is as it should be, we won't be able to come up with any solutions in 10 minutes.
Sure.
So with respect to St. John Properties and Mr. Pelon, we believe we can have all of, everything finished in the next two weeks.
Okay.
But I don't guess you're willing to meet with us before Christmas, is that it?
Our, our next scheduled meeting is January 16th.
So we will be, we will be ready for the January 16th meeting to get, to get both of them passed.
All right.
So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And it's nice to see all of you again. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to, I, I would make a motion to postpone the vote to the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Second.
This is for both plans, correct?
Both.
Yes.
I will do a roll call, though. Yes means that we will be postponing until January. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you in January. Thank you. This now concludes our... You get one more payday. This is the conclusion. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, January 16th, 2025, and will include a presentation by the Acting County Executive to kick off the capital improvement program and process. Additional information will be sent closer to the meeting. And before we adjourn again, Ms. Wolfson, Mr. Warren, Mr. McGinnis, Howard's already gone, thank you very much for all of your service. We will miss you. Always come back and visit us.
Thank you, guys, and good luck.
Thank you.
You're capable hands.
The people that are leaving may disagree, but we agree that you should have a North Star. And believable.
Talk to your council members. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.